And I will walk through our vision and mission and get meeting called and we'll get off on running here. So as you are probably familiar, the vision of the School District of Milton is that we believe in opportunities, achievement, and community for all. And our mission to support that vision is the School District of Milton, in partnership with the community, prepare our students for achievement and lifetime readiness by providing opportunities for all. Having said that, I will call to order the Board of Education meeting from Monday, December 11th, and invite you to join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Rich, are you aware of any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the second. Thank you. Rich's motion seconded by Dave to approve our agenda as we have it. Does anyone have questions on it? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, the minutes from our previous meeting are included in board docs. I would move to approve the minutes from regular meeting held on November 27, 2023. Is that it?
Second.
Thank you. Dave's motion was seconded by Tracy to approve the previous meeting minutes. Anyone have questions on the minutes? I hear none. All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And the vouchers are number E.
I'll move to approve the general checking account vouchers, totally $1,106,147.45 as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. John's motion and Dave's second to approve our checking account vouchers in the amount we've just enumerated. Are there any questions on the vouchers? All that are in favor of approving the vouchers, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And F is public comment, and we do have one community resident would like to speak to us, so. Heather, welcome. Make your way over to the podium, please.
Hi, everybody. You only get to see me once this month. I'm excited. Um, I am actually going to talk on virtual learning days. Um, if you get a chance to talk to it, it's finally on the agenda. As a parent of a K-3 and a 4th through 6, I've been very disheartened in how virtual days have been this year for Aces and Smarting. Um, I truly understand why the administration has gone and stated that we're going to do these virtual boards, especially for families that don't have Internet access and what we did like that. Where am I concerned? Why is the lack of accountability? With my K-3, I'm given a choice board and I'm like, I'll just send us pictures or tell us what you did. You don't have to submit anything. My 4th through 6 is pretty much, I read you the only measurable accountability that's shown for that. And I feel that that is a disservice not only to our students, because you guys have approved for these virtual days, but it's also a disservice to our students, because this is harming them. If you guys want to do professional development days, fine, then calculate that into the number of days that you guys are going to be at school or have these students at schools. But if you want Aces for this virtual days, and not let a K-3 bring home an iPad so that they can actually submit their work, then we have bigger problems, because this is not fair to these students. I understand high school, middle school is probably at a different level, but K-6, especially where we're struggling and where these students need to be, uh, once again, letting it not go in, because that's kind of where things have progressed. But as a parent, I am truly, truly upset with what has been occurring with these Aces for this virtual days. And I feel that if there are snow days and we choose to go Aces for this virtual, how is my K-3 even going to be able to get a virtual learning choice board even sent to them? Is that going to be on me as a parent who's reporting to work, um, saying, here Grandma and Grandpa, or here daycare, here's the choice board, because we're now on a snow day and we're past our two snow days? So just food for thought. I tried to bring this up a while ago, and I feel that this is just truly a disservice to the families of these other students. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was the only public comment we had. So we will move past that to two on the agenda is superintendent update. Rich, red hot highlights.
Yeah, a couple of things that I want to highlight tonight. It is winter concert season across all of our schools. Um, Red Hawk students at Easton Consolidated have their performances last week for their families. We had full gymnasiums at both schools, uh, for a number of different concerts at Easton Consolidated. Um, Midwest and Harmony will have their winter sings for families later this week. And tomorrow, our 6th through 8th grade choirs hold their concert at Milton High School at 7:00 PM. And on Thursday, uh, our high school choirs hold their performance. That also starts at 7:00 PM. Uh, community members, parents, staff members are all invited to join. And then next week, uh, Monday, December 18th, our high school band and 8th through 12th grade bands have their concert at Milton High School. Uh, again, um, community members, staff members, parents are invited to attend. So, uh, we're proud of the work that our teachers, particularly our music teachers, put in with students this time of year, and a great opportunity for people to see our students perform. Uh, recently, 15 Red Hawks participated in the annual Shop with a Cop event. Uh, our district social workers select students to take part in that, and they're paired up with a member of local law enforcement to go holiday shopping, uh, where they can pick out gifts to give their family. We want to thank the Milton Police Department, Janesville Police Department, deputies from Rock County Sheriff's Office, and wardens with Wisconsin DNI for making this a very memorable event for our students. Um, as we highlighted in our portrait of a Red Hawk that's on the wall behind us, one of our core competencies is collaboration, or two of our core competencies are collaboration and community building. Uh, we're proud of our students and student organizations, uh, this time of year especially. They're creating, organizing, and leading donation drives, uh, for local service organizations, food pantries, Humane Society. Um, several of those drives are taking place right now. So, um, we are emailing families and information in our newsletters and our district social media about all those opportunities to help support some wonderful, uh, community groups, uh, especially this time of year. And then a couple of things in athletics and activities that we want to highlight. Uh, Milton High School senior Emma Clagora was named the Wisconsin Prep Hockey Player of the Week. Uh, she was a forward for the Rock County Fury, which is our co-op girls hockey program. Uh, she has scored 14 goals and eight assists so far this season, and she's leading the state in scoring for girls hockey. So congratulations to Emma on that achievement. Um, she also has been nominated by, uh, for the WISSPORTS Athlete of the Week, and community members are encouraged to go to W-I-S-S-P-O-R-T-S dot net to vote for Emma. Um, she's in a tight rate race for first place, so people have an opportunity to support Emma there. And then one other congratulations, wrestler Tyson Peach, uh, won the Clipkeen Independence Invite, uh, with six wins and zero losses, uh, in the finals. He defeated the Iowa State Champion Blake Fox, 0 to 0. So, uh, that wrestling tournament is a Midwest tournament with some of the top wrestlers across not only Wisconsin, but across the Midwest. So congratulations to Tyson.
Okay, any questions for Rich? All righty, we will move on. Thanks, Rich. Uh, three and four are committee updates here. We'll start with Curriculum Committee, Jennifer.
All right, let's go to the Curriculum Committee on Monday, November 27th, and we have three agenda items. And I'm going to go ahead and let Julie come on up and talk first about our K through five math curriculum.
Good evening. So we have, um, our K-5 math curriculum is up for adoption at the end of this year. We are completing our 10th year, um, with math expressions. So we're looking at different, um, math curriculum to pilot. Um, so this past PD day, we've had our math teachers review the four math curriculums that we had finalized. So we looked at Bridges into Mathematics, the third edition, Imagine Learning a List of Mathematics, I Ready Classroom Mathematics, and Into Math. Those were the four that the leadership curriculum team kind of looked at around surrounding areas and we narrowed it down to those four. And then had teachers have the opportunity at this last PD day to kind of go through a new break and, um, select two. So they have selected on I Ready Classroom Mathematics and Into Math to pilot the second semester of this school year. Um, in that process, we also included 6 through 12. Um, they're not up for an adoption, but we're looking at a continuum and alignment of curriculum and standards. Um, 6 through 12 also, we wanted to take a look at what we currently have, um, to see. So they did look at Imagine Learning a List of Mathematics, which is a K-12. Um, Into Math is also a K-12. And then they wanted to add CPM, which is College Practical Mathematics. Um, so they have not yet kind of nailed down which two. Uh, we had some, um, some bumps when it came to CPM and resources that didn't have the access. Um, we reached out to the vendors. They didn't give us full access. So we're going to give, um, the high school team, the 612 team, a little bit more time to look through that. Any questions?
And then next, we covered, uh, the high school, the course proposals. So Jeremy.
Right. So I will not go over all of the course proposals that are in there. Uh, as you can see, there's quite a list of them there. But as I shared with the curriculum committee, uh, every year, uh, all new high school courses are required to be, um, approved by the board, and so we shared the proposals there. Uh, and this is, uh, kind of a banner year. So we bring new courses for a variety of reasons. One, we have, uh, we have new staff who are coming to the high school, and as they, uh, share their talents and interests, uh, we work with them. And we also are trying to stay abreast, especially in the elective areas with industry and community needs. Uh, and that certainly drove a lot of the discussion in our ticket curriculum tonight. And sometimes there's new opportunities as well, too. So, for example, in Spanish program, we are going to be moving to BW Green Bay. Uh, so actually removing A E Spanish, so students who complete Spanish V. Uh, that would be a dual credit with BW Green Bay. Students who pass the course can get free credits through the DVD. And actually with a B or higher can actually earn a retro credit, so up to 11 retro credits. So it's a, so as new opportunities arise, uh, and as we work with community members, uh, we do add those classes. One of those that I don't have here is that as we bring new courses on, we do require, we retire courses as well. Obviously, we can't continue to add it. I'll take it back, and so that has been part of it. Uh, all the courses that are listed here can be, uh, have kept the current staffing levels in mind, uh, so we can continue to offer these courses with current staffing and budgets. Although I do make notes in the memo, too, that, uh, they continue writing a grant, particularly for the tech ed area. Well, we could run each of these courses with our current instructional budget. Uh, obviously, we look to, we look to enhance them with the grants that we've been kicking this this in the past. And I actually feel that many of these courses that we put forth, particularly in tech ed, are going to put us in that position uh, for future grants as well. So, uh, with that, are there any questions about what you see in the memo?
Jeremy, a lot of the courses are tech ed focused.
Yes.
Is there not, is there a point along the way where Black Tech or an ATC or consultant can make sure of that? Or we're implementing aligns with where they're starting?
Yes, absolutely. So with, uh, particularly with like the welding and manufacturing, we've worked with them a great deal with regards to that. Uh, we've worked with, uh, we've begun discussions with Southwest Builders Association, progressive construction trade, that we're looking at project. Uh, we work with that. Uh, with the, um, the engineering, uh, we actually, we also have, uh, the, and I believe I mentioned in there, two, the, uh, community councils, too. So actually, we're looking at February PD day, uh, where each of those tech ed areas are going to have four to six or seven different area businesses that are going to be ongoing meetings with them that's going to take a look at. That can include Black Tech as well. Uh, what are industry standards, what's coming forward? And we hope to make these all more nimble as well, to reflect in what are the needs in the community, but also where are they picking up at, like at Black Tech. Uh, I also, I forgot to mention, too, the really exciting one. There's a lot of exciting ones there. But with Mercy Health, connection with Mercy Health, uh, Jennifer, I can't forget this. Uh, so working with EMT, we're actually going to be, uh, working with Mercy Health, where they're going to be teaching the EMT course as well. That's a new opportunity, so that's a new outlook for, uh, bringing instructors. We'll actually have an instructor on record, uh, from the high school, but we'll get with instructors with Mercy to teach at the EMT course. So long-winded answer, but yes, continue to agree. Okay?
Maybe, Jeremy, just touch briefly on the whole capstone thing.
Oh, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, so one of the things that, um, with both the tech ed courses and the business and marketing, uh, we redesigned the courses to really teach a capstone class as well, too. In many cases, being able to reach a capstone course their junior year. And a student may be able to make, reach capstone in two or even three areas within elective areas. The idea of being able to reach to a capstone course at least one of them your junior year is it's also prepares uh, youth apprenticeship their senior year. And so part of those, uh, councils that we will be establishing for each of the, uh, for, for all the tech ed areas, business and marketing, face, egg science, is looking to enhance more specific youth apprenticeships. And maybe can be a big part of this as well. So that, that capstone course perhaps junior year launches right into youth apprenticeship the senior year, too. So that more directly will. So that's all part of the academic and career plan, is to begin to focus on those areas. Uh, and also if you, uh, you're able to, to continue to take other areas. So students can, and some of our other, the way we have courses designed before, students could focus into one, but it's hard to begin to prep as well, too. Uh, you'll notice in there to, in this, that we oftentimes have three courses deep. You can get a lot of this in there, but three courses deep to get capstone, so you can actually branch out into other areas, too, which is, which is helpful. Students are trying to figure out what they want to do.
I should say, I appreciate the time and effort that went into really expanding on the, um, the construction trades.
Yes.
You know, because that's, you know, an area that we really need to focus with them, where some of our students know they don't want to go to a 4 year. So I appreciate the, uh, the effort that went in there.
I do want to mention, too, that in all of these courses, while I work with each of those teams, the work here, the line share, this, uh, that I really came with the different staff that in these different areas. Uh, this work began actually last spring. Tech Ed had a rip, because we hired two new staff this summer. So we've been really working with them, uh, again, the experiences they brought. So the staff in all these areas put a lot of effort into these courses. They're, they're an integral part of actually designing.
Jeremy, for the better of us, word wasn't the main. Could you just, uh, expand on what question I asked you last time? Uh, you have it all set sustainable. You might, you're going to be able to afford all of you. So can you expand on that real quick?
So we, I have my instructional budget, right? And so we are able to, we look at an evaluation, uh, particularly in the tech ed classes that are listed here, what is the current, uh, equipment that we have? We're able to run these courses as is with my current instructional budget. Now, with, as we continue to move forward, as we continue to write grants and looking for additional equipment and be able to enhance the experiences, we'll continue to do that. Uh, the one thing that I didn't mention here, too, I want to detail with the curriculum committee, was that in the tech ed, each of the tech ed areas, we have aligned with specific industry, uh, certifications. So current state legislature has a laws, Act 59, that has specific, uh, uh, grants available for students who meet a certain certification within their high school course room. And so you can get up to $1,000 per certification. We've actually designed these courses aligned with the various courses, uh, approved certifications in Act 59. Again, when I say we're setting ourselves up for more sustainable, we're actually setting ourselves up uh, for more apprenticeships for students to achieve more of those and to be able to, uh, it's good for the student, that goes on to their resume as they leave high school, but it also puts us positioned, uh, for more grant dollars for the state.
And this is some, an actual life.
I would motion to recommend all the courses as proposed by the high school administration, starting in the 2024-25 academic school year. I'll second.
Thank you. Dave's motion seconded by F to approve the recommended, uh, new courses for our high school curriculums. Anyone have questions on those? All in favor, he said aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That clearly passes.
And then the last thing we talked about under agenda was the virtual learning days. And, uh, we got into a discussion about instructional hours, and I think, uh, Rich is going to talk to us a little bit about what kind of transpired there.
Yeah, I'm giving an update, uh, to the board on that conversation. Um, we talked about the use of virtual days, the changes that were given, uh, from the first virtual instruction day to the second one based on parent feedback, to better meet, uh, parent needs. Uh, in general, our staff want and need, uh, training, uh, time during the course of the year to continue to improve their skills. It's an important part of what we do. But we also understand that parents would prefer to have their, their kids in school as much as possible. And to balance those two things, we do have five professional development days throughout the course of, of the year. And in order to ensure continuity of instruction, rather than not having any instruction for students on those professional development days, we do offer virtual instruction for students. Um, we continue to fine tune our approach, uh, to those virtual instruction days to best meet student needs and address parent concerns. Uh, so we strongly encourage parents to reach out to their child's teacher and principal, uh, if there are things that are not working well, uh, for them, to see if they can be addressed. And then as an example of what our staff does on those professional development days, at the most recent one on, on, actually, the one on November 6th, I mean, activity was all district safety training, uh, for active shooters or intruders. And we obviously can't do that training while students, uh, are at the school. Um, we have taken a look at and wanted to provide the board with, with some, uh, data on the number of instructional days that we have, because we're planning on the first board meeting in January to have the board approve the number of instructional days for the 24-25 school year. Uh, our policy says that the board approves the, the number of instructional days. Um, over the last nine, when we look back at the last nine years, and our average over those nine years of the number of onsite instructional days is 173. And for the last two years, we've had 173.5. The reason there's a .5 there is the very last day with students for the last two years, for last year and for this year, uh, that's a half day. So that teachers have, uh, the second half of that day to finalize grades and get classrooms cleaned up and to do some prep work for summer school. Um, for the last four years, kind of this year, we have had instructional days on top of those, uh, onsite days. And, uh, the nine-year average for overall instructional days is 175.1. Uh, but this year, we're at 178.5. So we're, we're, our trend is that we have more instructional days than we have in the past. Um, we, um, utilize those, those virtual days as not taking the place of onsite days, but being in addition to, uh, those onsite days, uh, that we have. And we'll be bringing a recommendation to the board for approval on January 8th for the number of instructional days for the 24-25 school year.
Rich, what is the minimum from the state for instructional days? Do you know that, Jeremy?
The state made a change from instructional days to instructional minutes now. And our two experts in our district on instructional minutes are Principal Bill Horn and, uh, and Principal Kramer. I don't know of Principal Bill Horn. Do you have that?
K-6 is 1,050 hours. 712 is 1,136 hours.
1,136.
Hours. It might be 37, let me check. I guess.
And I believe that I said a change from instructional days to instructional minutes, but the requirement is instructional hours.
So, and what is it, six hours a day? Right? How many days?
Jeremy, how many hours do you, that curriculum? Each, I, I've got to find the doctor, guys. Um, uh, high school and middle school is 410 minutes a day. I believe K-6 is 385.
Because you have to take out lunch and passing time.
You take out your start time to your end time, you minus one lunch period and one passing period, and that's your minutes.
410.
Then we can bring that to the board in January.
Yeah, the way I was going with it was, and again, I had similar concern. I listened to the public comment. I did have similar concerns, uh, in the meeting going into it, to understand where we, where we sit versus the state. Um, and I appreciate all the conversation that we had in the room in, uh, at that committee meeting to kind of explain why things are done the way that they are, um, as a parent and as a board member, to just listen to, to hear what the principals had to say, and Julie as well, on the, um, the explanation as to why. And the, the why is absolutely understandable, the teachers in their PD days, um, versus can we just have, the kids not have virtual, or do they, um, do they have to have virtual? And I thought that part of what swayed me was that we still have more than the state requires. Um, it builds in, so that they are still getting that level of education, um, whereas the, the virtual days, again, at the higher levels, it's a little bit more intensive. They do have a classroom to do versus the little, where it's just a continuation. So, um, getting the feedback from some folks, as well as for the public comment, that was part of what made me understand we are meeting the requirements for the students on those days. So, um, so yeah, in the January meeting, looking at the days that we're bringing them in. So I just wanted to give my feedback, and I appreciate the, the conversations that were held in that meeting.
Any other questions of the curriculum committee?
I guess I would just go ahead and Tracy's comments. I don't know. I haven't, I don't have any proper staff development days, but what feedback you get on virtual learning. I guess at the end of the day, virtual learning should be a rare occurrence in my mind, uh, especially in that K-5 area, who else? John, you sort of forgot, or here's some worksheets that you could look at starting Friday, and at least have very clear, I don't know, five sheets of paper with questions or whatever it is that we're going to complete over a period of time as opposed to. There's different resources where to take for, uh, getting access to the various things. And if they're not done, it's, it's disjointed, I guess. And so not be against a, or streamline more educationally focused process in those days. I'll, I'll just piggyback quick. I think one of the things that I took away from that meeting was we're adapting as time goes on, right? So this may look different next time or next year, whatever. So hopefully, as teams adapt, they'll streamline it more conducive to all situations.
And I guess maybe for the conversation in January, what would happen if we decided that those PD days were just going to be strictly PD days? So at the end of the day, if the PD days are PD days, which are, we need for our staff, and the students don't have virtual, they're losing those minutes. And then what would that look like for the extension of the possible school year? I, I'm just curious if that's a part of the conversation, because you want to make sure that you're meeting all the requirements, um, at the same time as we are the needs of our students. So, um, like I said, we're, I think we're adapting. Um, I like the idea of continuity, so you know that you're not just, it's not just a day off. So a snow day where you have to do work versus a snow day that you can just go play, snow all day, are two different things for students. So good conversation to come.
Yeah, I think it has been a good conversation. We did get some feedback after our first PD day this year from parents and our teachers and principals, incorporated that feedback into changes that we made. So John talks about us adapting. We, we want to hear from parents if there are things that aren't working well for them. Um, it's our feeling that a day of virtual instruction isn't as good a day instructional as a day onsite, but it's better than not any instruction at all, and the skills that students develop are something that they'll be able to use post-high school, too, because there definitely is a lot of virtual learning that takes place in universities and colleges. So developing those skills special for older students is very valuable. Continue to look for ways to do it as, as well as we can.
Great. That's all we got?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. And then four, like I said, the secondary committee meeting from last week. John will summarize what the finance folks discussed.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, the finance committee meeting, uh, was held on Monday, December 4th, and we had just under a two-hour meeting. Uh, there was only one item on the agenda. It was budget forecasting. Uh, there were a few takeaways I'd like to share. First off, I want to thank Ross for all of his, uh, detailed information he prepared for us. Uh, as we all know, school finance is complex stuff, especially when some of the components are unknown. Uh, so thank you, Ross, for that. I'd also like to thank the committee members, uh, Dave and Joe, uh, and Rich and Ross for our conversation. I think we had a great forward thinking conversation, uh, a two-hour conversation. Uh, lastly, I would like to share something I think we should all celebrate, that's school board, parents committee, uh, our community, teachers, staff, et cetera. Um, and that is that our short term, um, we, we should celebrate is that the short term, the Milton-
we should celebrate is that the short-term, the middle school district is in a pretty good financial spot. Although the short-term outlook is favorable, we also know that some of the work will need, some work will need to be done. Committee has directed Ross and the admin team to continue to do their work on budget forecasting and to share an update sometime after the start of the year by the way committee. Ross, Rich, I'm not sure if we can take it further.
Yeah, I'll turn things over to Ross to kind of walk through the information.
Sure. John, I have a lot of highlights, but let me focus on last week's committee meeting, just to look at the kind of long-term structure of what we think could happen in the state budget compared to what we know today. Since we're on a two-year budget cycle with the state, there is a period which we know will every, every year. We are going into next year, going into second year of funding. So we know a little more than it should have. However, as John mentioned, we do have one significant change in our district as a school district in that we got access to lower revenue ceiling, which you have heard from these statistics, which does allow us to sustain some of our operations, at least the 24-25, without any significant handelction. That being said, there are still a handful of unknowns we're monitoring. But beginning of the 25-26 school year, the projection data, and that included this given time as well, does start to produce some pretty significant deficits. If we look even further out, it makes a modest assumption to know what state funding could look like, especially once the current operating referendum expires, we'll be looking at some pretty significant decisions for some discussions around future funding opportunities that we look to forward to all of them.
Any questions for Ross or anyone else on the committee?
I just kind of reiterated John's point, but I know a lot of work, putting together some forecasts and things like that. John alluded to it, being two hours, and it was a good two-hour discussion. Just listening to local news, there's a lot of districts here, local in this area, that are making significant catch-up calls starting right now. And the fact that we have a little time, some budget stability, to kind of figure out next steps is pretty important. And as you see in the documents in there, while we are sitting pretty good today, the opportunity to really kind of explore this further and make some solid decisions for the future is, is not only here, but every month we're meeting about these things. So, yeah, putting together this, giving us really kind of a point with where we are, where we need to be, place our focus in the coming years is, is very good. And it will be an ongoing discussion here in the coming months.
Ross, you currently brought up the forecast for the upcoming year, the budget forecast for the upcoming years. Can you kind of walk the board through some of the highlights and show that document?
So what you're looking at here is a page out of our forecasting model, I'll be there. And we have the current, recent history up on the screen on the far left. The final data for the 22-23 school year, the current budget year we just approved in 22-24, highlighted in blue. And then the projected budget for 24-25, based on some initial assumptions, which I had discussed internally and we discussed in committee meeting last week. Beyond that is a little bit of the crystal ball moment. For those looking at this page for the first time, we do not know what the next biennium is going to bring. Beginning of the 25-26 school year, we're talking about two major state funding cycles. On here though, we have some assumptions around what we think is going to happen to enrollment. Most districts in the state of Wisconsin right now are experiencing some level of declining enrollment. Due in part to national standards around birth rates, also because of the time since COVID, there's been some change to enrollment patterns across the border. Additionally, you'll see right down the line, if you're going from top to bottom, from the left there, the projected per people increase in the state revenue limit, we know that we're getting 325 this year, 325 next year. Beyond that, we have initial forecast of 200,000 people, which is really just an estimate that we think could happen based on prior state budgets, but we know that number has been very inconsistent. That being said, there's some other modest assumptions in there around property value. We feel that it's at least conservative at this point to say that a 5% increase in property value is likely for the next several years, knowing that the past several years, we've had 12%, 17% increases depending on the year, and some record inflation. What you're also seeing on here is projected shortfalls beginning of the 25-26 school year. Let's start to see as those red numbers appear on the shortfall deficit line for 25-26. There's a pretty significant dropping point for 26-27 that signifies two major changes. One, the ending of our current referendum with no replacements, and the natural increase of inflationary costs for the district for about 3% or 4%. Beyond that, if we made no intervention, which of course we have to at that point, our fund model will start to drop quickly. It's projected to show a negative beginning of 27-28. Obviously, that would be newer insolvent, so we would not be able to project that far in that year. But for purposes of inflationary costs, using a cash flow budget model, those are the deficits that you produce. Beyond that, the tax impact starts to diminish, ironically enough, due to the lack of state authority to increase the revenue limit. And the bill rate is projected to fall considerably over the next several years, even under this, what I would consider a modest state funding model for the next four years. Aside from that, you can see on here, there is some impacts to an average homeowner. Again, I have a flat rate of $100,000 that starts to go down as well. That's also reflective of the projected minimal, projected decrease in authority over time in the state.
One thing that I want to share to that before there's other discussion or questions on the memo, if you pull that back up, currently, look at the second page, actually, the memo. It shared the per people adjustment history since 2009, 2010. And on that graph, you can see the orange dots represent what that per people adjustment would be if they had been indexed to the CPI from year to year. And the blue is what they actually were. So you can see that for the first couple of years there, that those two things were in alignment. But starting in 2011, 12, with the decrease in the per people adjustment, and then very small, if any, increases over time since then, you can see how far behind inflationary increases that's fallen, to the point where for this coming year, it's anticipated to be over $3,300 per people, which for a district our size is a very significant amount of money. So the state's funding for public schools hasn't come close to keeping pace with inflationary increases over time, is what that's showing. We had a Rock County superintendent's meeting this morning, and one of the topics was what are districts going to do to address budget concerns? And a number of districts are going to referendum this April. There are others that are considering going to operating referendum in the fall of 2024, or during the year in 2025, depending on their situation. But all school districts in the state are dealing with this issue. The state really, by not keeping pace with inflation, has told local school districts, you either need to not have your spending keep up with inflation, which means you offer fewer things and add larger class sizes, because a lot of our costs are tied to inflationary costs, or you ask your local taxpayers for additional revenue to be able to fill those gaps. We brought that operating referendum in April of 2023, that wasn't successful. We're fortunate, as some board members and Ross have shared, and it's detailed in the memo, that for this year and for next year, we'll be able to have a balanced budget. We had a balanced budget this year, with, we did make over a million dollars in budget cuts for this year. And we utilized, that's a one-time estimate, we're fortunate that one thing that the state did was lower that floor. So that the revenue limit floor of $10,000 was increased to $11,000. And because we were one of the many districts that were near that floor, that had a significant impact on our district for this year. And that carries over and allows us to be able to have a balanced budget for next year, without planning to have to make budget reductions. But as you can see here, as Ross pointed out, currently, if you go back to the table, with the budget forecast, you can see that in 25-26, we're anticipating a budget shortfall. And then in 20, starting in 26-27, that budget shortfall grows significantly, in large part because the current two and a half million dollar non-recurring referendum expires after the 25-26 year. So the discussion at the finance committee was in part around whether the board is going to want to, or whether the finance committee would recommend to the board to bring an operating referendum in April of '24, this coming April. And the one other document, and Ross, I'll let you speak to, but I'll currently pull up the document that shares referendum timeline options. So do you want to share some highlights from that that we talked about with the committee, Ross?
So when we're talking about when we can come forward, like to discuss referendum questions like we've done in the past, this is a schedule of possible dates for the next several years. And the last possible date we would need to file our motions with DPI to put a referendum question together. So between now and when our referendum expires, we really have three opportunities to consider, only a handful of which are viable for us to do some future planning. There is April 2024, which is an option, which means we need to take action no later than January 23rd. And also the fall general election, which would be a motion no later than February, I'm sorry, August 27th of 2024, which is 70 days prior to the actual election date. The third option would be going in 2025. At that point, we'd be entering into budget development, knowing that we're moving to our final year. This would almost be two weeks, rest of a considerable adjustments if we were to pick that date. So what we've got to discuss the committee is targeting some scenarios and planning around November 2024, operating referendum question discussion.
And that was, some of the committee members talked about, we met for two hours, and a lot of it was around that conversation. When the referendum didn't pass in April of 2023, and the state hadn't made a decision on funding per schools for this biennium, I think we, at the time, felt that if something didn't happen at the state level, we would be at a point right now where we either would need to bring an operating referendum to the voters, or make extremely large budget cuts for this coming year. Because the state did up that revenue limit amount, they, that does give us that leeway for this year and next year. So Ross and I have had a number of conversations on this, and we are not recommending that the board bring an operating referendum to the voters in April of 2024. If the board feels that we should, that would be a good decision for the board to make tonight. Because as this shares, that decision with the question, the specific question, would need to be laid out by mid-January. So we wouldn't have a lot of time to put something together, but we could, and we would get going on that right away, if the board felt that April 2024 was the right time to do that. The finance committee, as you can see in the memo, the finance committee recommends that administration continue budget forecasting and put scenarios for a possible operation referendum in November of 2024. So the committee and our administration aren't recommending that the board make a decision tonight about November of 2024. That we would bring more information, we put together a stakeholder group with staff members, parents, community members, board members being part of that, to dig into that a little bit more this spring and into the summer. A decision about November of 2024 would need to be made by the middle of April, is one question that would have to be identified. So there's some time to do that, and it doesn't need to be done tonight. But if the board feels that we should bring an operating referendum to the voters in April of 2024, we'd prefer that that decision is made tonight rather than in January. So if there is anyone that feels that way, we should talk that through tonight, and if you want to make a motion to do that. We didn't feel that there should be a motion to not bring it, because it's going to, you could always take action to not do something. But we also wanted to some clarity on that tonight, because we want to talk to staff and community members about what those, how we will address those long-term deficits that are coming up.
And then just piggybacking your thoughts, Rich, you know, fortunately, the state's convoluted method for semi-funding education doesn't appear to be changing anytime soon, but fortunately, we have some time to come up with a, I guess, more local-based solution. I certainly interject as needed to the rest of committee members, but Rich and I agree, the opportunity to project later in '24, and have an opportunity to have that discussion here, get community input, stakeholders, not only thoughts on it, but the opportunity to share what the issues are. Because the budget forecast charted up there, while an algorithm spits out those numbers, it's, it'd be grossly irresponsible for us to go down that path very far. So, yeah, I can speak on myself, and I think progress with committee, looking for it later in '24, and having an opportunity to really jump in, explore the issue, explore the possible solutions, and again, build community understanding around it. So it certainly feels like the best approach at this point.
So I'm going to slightly disagree, and I was at the committee meeting, I apologize. The concern I have is as we get to the fall general, we're going to run right face into a bunch of partisan politics. And that's my concern. Again, I may be the only person here that thinks that, but the spring primary is non-partisan, it's more local-focused versus the fall, where now we have the presidential election. And everybody who knows politics is not a pretty thing, so now you have partisan folks who are set fast on their side. And are we going to be able to bring in non-partisan school stuff on that timeframe? Is it a battle that we're going to be able to communicate through with all the other stuff that's going to be going on? It's just something I kind of want to throw out there. And that's not really sweet either way, but I look at the dates, and it's like, would we have more ears of folks who aren't being bombarded by partisan politic information in the spring, this coming spring, versus in the fall, when now you're just inundated by, everybody knows TV ads and everything else that come out? So I just kind of want to throw that out there for conversation, to see what folks think.
I can share a little bit, and then, because we did talk about this at the committee, and then committee members can add to, share his thoughts. But we talked at length about the timing. It's clear from the budget forecast that we're going to need to do something. Because, and that something could be cut $4 million from our budget, but we know the impact that cutting.
No, I'm talking this spring, sorry, I'm talking like this spring going out. Like, okay, sorry, I'm not saying not do, I'm saying going out this coming spring versus.
Totally, that's more big picture, that at some point, we, the board will have to make a decision, the district will have to make a decision, do we want to cut our way out of these deficits, or do we want to increase our revenues? And really, the only control over increasing revenues that we have as a group are is bringing an operating referendum. So the decision about when is in part tied to the forecast for this coming year. One of the pieces of feedback that we heard from community members in our last referendum was, let's, what if the district waited until we were a little bit closer to when the current operating referendum expires? And we know we don't want to wait until we're right up to when it expires, because at that point, if we wait until that April before it expires, we will need to identify what those cuts are going to be and lay people off prior to that election happening. And I think many staff members would say, we're not going to wait around and see if this passes, we're going to look for a job somewhere else where there's more stability. So we weighed where do we want that to fall? And there's differences between April and November. One positive, and he laid out a negative that certainly is a case. One positive to November is that there typically is a larger turnout, so you're giving more voters an opportunity to weigh in. And obviously, everybody has the opportunity, whether they take advantage of it or not. But I think your point is something for us to consider. Be interesting to hear from all the board members, what their thoughts are.
Yeah, I can share some, too, and obviously, I've got a little bit of a referendum history when you go back. And we've talked at length the other times about, you know, what is the right timing? And there's a lot of factors in that. I agree totally with what you're thinking there, is that we don't want to get lost in the discussion when national and state politics drives the discussion, if you will. But Rich hinted at, what I think is one of the really key pieces here, is that when we reflected on the most recent operating referendum that failed, we put together the solution, and then we sort of went out and defended it in the manner. the solution, and then we sort of went out and defended it in the manner of public meetings or input, or we were trying to explain it and rationalize it, et cetera, but the question was already cast, if you will, we had decided what we were doing. We think we want to flip that around, such that we want to engage the community, stakeholders, whoever we can get in the room, and, and Ross and the committee, we walked through scenario A, B, C, just for example, and it said, well, we could address this issue by doing this, or the second choice, it was a different set of circumstances. We want to be able to have a roomful of people that are interested and engaged, and, and explain why some of those scenarios might be more favorable than others, and, and get folks' input before we necessarily kind of craft a solution, if you will, if that's the right way to characterize it. So I don't think, the committee felt strong, and there isn't time to do that, to commit in January, to put him in on the ballot, et cetera. So because our needs aren't, you know, paramount for this coming budget cycle, we felt like waiting until that fall election cycle is better from a chronological standpoint, albeit it does fall in a general election. Rich hinted at, another thing that had gotten shared with, with our board over the years, referenda are typically more successful with larger turnouts. Now, that varies a little bit, community to community, but if you look at all referenda, and it's both capital and operating across the state, there's a greater success rate in the general elections. So that kind of balances a little bit the reluctance to do it in the political dialogue, that we know, we know is gonna happen, shoot, it already is, right? So we've, we kind of know that upfront, and we felt like, you know, that the local issue, we want that to be important to folks, and we want to be able to talk through it thoroughly, and, and really get community input on what folks really want us to be aiming for, for a solution, because at the end of the day, we need them to get behind us, or at least a majority of them. So the more thorough we can kind of lay out what the situation is, and this is, this is a great snapshot, but there's a tremendous amount of detail that, that kind of supports all these figures. And I think the other thing that, to make the point of, is the further we wait without causing concern about our ability to make balanced budgets, there's fewer unknowns. And right, right now, we're dealing with a myriad of them, there's dozens of them, and they're, you know, those become known at different points in time, so the, the little bits and pieces that we can gain closer to that point, I think, will help us make these numbers more accurate, and, and draw a clearer picture of, of what, what our situation looks like, and, like I said, potential solutions. Sorry, I went on a little long there, but...
I'm sorry, and I, I think Tracy said it's a really good point, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because one I hadn't thought of. Where I sit personally is, I hear time and time again, when referendum comes up, well, but fail, you're gonna just run next time, right? We're just gonna get another one, we're just gonna keep coming. And I, I think we have a golden opportunity, from an optimistic standpoint, to take a pause on that, and, and not, and with the referendum this time around, and do some fact gathering, as Joe was saying, and then maybe engage stakeholders a little bit. It's tough out there right now, but I think if we have a chance for, I think that might weigh in our favor, if you can say, look, we're gonna wait until we are really sure that we know, and we're gonna give a break on this, this time around, and really ask for what we need. That's, that's kind of where I'm at, but I hadn't thought of your, your points. I think it's a very respectful point. And I also just want to say from my own piece of mind, so I can say it out loud publicly, this is not a known school district problem, this is the state of Wisconsin underfunding every school district in the state of Wisconsin. We seem in charge, we all know that. So I feel bad that we're in this situation at all, we have to decide between reducing opportunities for our students, which is what we've already done, make this budget balance this year, or asking our community for more money. I've been just saying it out loud, because it sucks, I apologize for your front language, but it clearly is the state of Wisconsin underfunding school districts, that's why we're here.
I think, I also think it makes sense to wait, you know, as time goes on, when next summer, we'll have more information, a better idea of what our financial picture looks like. When it comes to engaging people, boy, we tried that last spring, we met with groups, and I, you know, you talk to people, and I, I thought we did a good job of it. I, you know, I guess it depends on who you talk to, you hold a meeting, and try to get people to come, but I, you know, you can't make them. And Tracy, to your comment, unfortunately, all, all elections have become partisan, in my opinion. And it's, it's, I don't, I, I don't really think it matters, matters when you hold it spring, fall. All elections have become too partisan, you know, ugly, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, and, and again, I mean, I, I look forward to the meetings, I don't usually wait till next summer, I think next summer's too late. I mean, like you had mentioned, like, we're gonna know things, but if we're gonna start engaging community members, we have to give up, you know, obviously, more time is better. And I would just say one thing, we definitely, and I will say this, stand behind it, I think we, we just need to stay a little more positive and not negative, like, I understand that we keep going after the state, and the state, and the state, and the state, and I understand that. So those are curveballs that we can't, we can't control, but we can say positively what we can control, rather than, you know, being negative outwardly towards folks that, that we don't have power to control. If you want to change the voting rules, we can, and if we can't, we can't. But definitely, the sooner we start engaging with our, because I've heard it, I, I heard it this, this school year, when they started to feel it, when the fees were hitting, when the athletics were impacted by budget cuts, I heard them say, well, I should have really supported that referendum, maybe we would have gotten cuts. They saw a lot of it after the fact, so I think the table is set to bring the community members in, the booster clubs, the parents' clubs, and, and to have those, those honest conversations, these are honest numbers, I'm gonna count them, I, you can see the honest numbers that are there. So they're hard decisions, but I love the fact that we're going to try to engage them on the front end, I think that's great and very positive, because then you don't, you have that momentum going in, not crossing your fingers that you hope the taxpayers are gonna support you, because you can get the support, and you get the people that the, the voters trust, especially the parents. So a lot of folks will say to the parents, or do you think that we need this, or do you, because kids are at school? We gotta sell that to the folks that don't have it in the schools, that's the problem. I mean, any parent will say, I don't want to see my kid with a sixteen class, you know, but if you're, as I always said, my nine-year-old neighbor, who doesn't have any kids in the district anymore, and he's on a fixed income, I want to see my taxes bill up. So you gotta kind of play to both of those. And the district is such a important part of our community that we have to stand our ideas, so that's fine. Just wanted to put that point out there about the election timing.
That's okay. Timing wise, Rich, if we don't vote tonight, we meet again January, I would suppose, the committee?
The Finance Committee?
Finance Committee, yeah.
If, if we don't vote tonight for...
Well, if we're, if we're not gonna make a motion to have an April, yeah, the April ballot, so Finance Committee will meet what, January, February?
We have one meeting September, January, not established, but we would be meeting before, in February, for sure.
So we'd have a timeline for these stakeholder meetings, probably at that time, if you let everybody know, so, yeah.
And I would agree, Tracy shared not waiting until summer, I think that, I think waiting until summer is too late, and getting, having those meetings, and even we identified some key folks to have at those meetings, and I don't think we should just focus on people that were supportive of the last referendum, I think we need to hear from folks who aren't, aren't in favor of it, and, and want to share some reasons why, because that balance is really important, because we work really hard to be strong fiscal stewards, and we do it really well as a school district. We have tightened our belts about as much as they can tighten or two, without having significant impact on students and programs. So in order to maintain our high-quality programs and opportunities and student achievement, we have to find a solution to this, and maybe have to engage with our key stakeholders.
Great point, to bring in those that weren't maybe not supportive, and explain them why, and let, and let them, and, you know, real, real experience. So some, again, you have to get through that connotation of, oh, well, you're just spending money, spend money, no, we're, we're not, you know, and as you dig in and you learn more, and again, being here, for the short time that I have, I've learned a lot on, on the costs and what needs to be, so having that, being, be communicated in a more relaxed setting, where there is two-way conversation with the public, I think would be hugely positive experience.
I'm gonna just challenge you a little bit respectfully, because I think really, I do disagree strongly. It is the, I believe, this is my opinion, that I believe it is our job to advocate at the state level for more funding, because pre-act, and which was not the case, it was, it's on statistics, it shows, there was funding. For us to just say that we're not going to challenge the state of Wisconsin, and say we can do better, we can do it through voting, we can do it through advocacy, just means we're accepting that fate. And it wasn't this way pre, pre-act, and we didn't have these problems, it was intentional. And the state of Wisconsin is a smart state, they know what they're doing, they can choose on public education. I personally believe that's part of the message, that we need to advocate for more funding, but we wouldn't be here. And it's not fair to say, we're not gonna fund our schools if the taxpayers can do it. Forty cut programs, and that's, look across the state of Wisconsin, every one referendum, it's not just one, all of the same vote, so I do believe in advocacy, in this respect, but I feel that's a very important part of the message.
And we did have those two-way conversations with people. I don't, Rich, I don't know how many meetings or groups you went to speak with, it was, it was many, but maybe we need to change a little bit about what we're talking about. I, I had a conversation with a guy, two days after the referendum failed, and we were talking about what the tax impact would be, and he said, that was what my taxes were gonna go up? It's like, you know, he was surprised at how low it was. And I was, I was baffled, I was very frustrated.
I think taking our time and engaging with folks before a decision is made on how to address the issue, and I think the information that we shared out was very clear and factual, and I think, and tied into the, to the state legislature, I think that we can advocate, but, and be factual when we do it, we want to make sure that it's around our situation and the impact that it has, and we can, can share that message in a positive, respectful way, but I think it's important for, for folks at the state legislature to understand the position that we're in too. Yeah, and, and to your point, Rick, I think it's really, really important for us to find ways to get the message out, because people that came to those meetings laughed with a really clear understanding of, of why we were in the position we were in at the time. And there were a number of folks who said, I, I came in thinking that I wasn't gonna support this, and I, I think I would be willing, yes, but when we're speaking to, or to eight people at a time, that, that isn't how we, that isn't the best way for us to message.
I think one of the things that we talked about, as far as, Joe touched upon it, there's, there's different ways that a solution may present to the public, so there isn't like, there's just one question that's taken to the public, there's, there's different potential solutions, and how things are structured, when they are implemented, things like that, so get opportunity to have stakeholders maybe provide some feedback, but we could do A, we could do B, we could do C, they all would potentially be adequate, which one is better understood by the public, and things like that. Creating a little bit more of a timeline, having that discussion is, is easier, if I have a better term, than the, the last approach was, which was, here's a question, and then hope for another.
I agree, have, have them in, on the front, I brought them back, because I went to some of the meetings that, there were four people in attendance at, and they already, both had their mindset before they walked in, they already heard what it was gonna be, the dollar in their head, and that was, they were predisposed, so it was very, you were trying to fight against them versus explaining to them.
So the purpose for bringing this tonight to the Board is because we are butting up against that deadline for a decision if, if the Board wanted to bring a referendum this April. In the memo, there's a recommendation from the Finance Committee that could be made as a motion, which, which states that the Finance Committee recommends the administration continue budget forecasting to include scenarios for a possible operation referendum in November of 2024. That is worded that way because it doesn't tie us into bringing something in November of 2024, it directs our admin team to continue the budget forecast and include what some scenarios will look like, and part of that, part of those scenarios would be to set up meetings with community members to talk through our financial situation for next year and for upcoming years.
So like, we don't need a motion on this, but if the Board feels more comfortable picking a correction, I guess might be the way to, to characterize it. It's like I said, the Finance Committee has basically done that at that level, and said, continue your good work, and I'll reiterate John's points there, thank you to, to Ross and Rich, and the folks on Ross's staff that helped develop these numbers, it's the best forward-looking models that we've, that we've had and worked with, and it just, while it's a daunting task, it's just easier when the information gets better and better and better. So thank you for your, your hard work and your detail. So. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we will roll on. Thank you, Ross.
Okay.
All right, we will close the book on that agenda item. Thank you, John, for that committee report. New business, we'll bounce back to Rich, this is an alternative open enrollment application update.
Yeah, earlier this, this past spring, the Board made a decision not to bring all of the open enrollment applications to the Board for approval, that we bring the initial ones, and then we have them after the deadline. I approve them, but keep the Board updated on where that stands. So we've shared that in, in Board docs, and since then, we've had a total of forty-eight open enroll in to the district, this is since July 1st, and forty-nine open enroll outs of the district, so it's been almost exactly, and even number of both. We have had a few that have filled out the application and then decided not to open enroll, sometimes people fill out the application, but then decide to stay at their resident school. And there are four pending open enroll outs, where we approved the paperwork, but, but the student is still enrolled with our, our district at this time. So that's just our regular update to the Board on what's happened since the, the official deadline program that was in and out.
Rich, can I just make a request, I guess? Can we see this document in a format that we can filter? Because I'd really like to see if there's a trend in the grade. If, we are, because the way it's formatted right now, you have no idea how many seventh graders are leaving, unless you literally come through the pages.
We can bring, and I'm thinking in our third Friday count paperwork, it has the, at that time, the number of students that are open enrolled in and open enrolled out in that rainbow-colored sheet, but we can bring an update on that, that includes the earlier ones and these to the Board, by, by grade, split out by the grade level.
Is this in addition to the other, where we started, is this, is this cumulative?
Yeah, this is since we started, so this is not including the, the ones that were approved over the summer.
Okay, because I think, I thought we were favorable in versus out, or this is the out, okay, so this is not cumulative, so we have to flip.
Correct, we are still favorable in versus out.
In versus out, okay, that's what I was thinking, all right.
All right, any other questions for that? Otherwise, we will move on, and Whistlerius A is our statin report.
I'll look to approve a statin report as presented.
Second. Tracy's motion is seconded by Rick to approve the statin report. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that clearly passes. Gifts and donations are B, and that list is included in Board docs as usual.
I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second that.
John's motion, seconded by Rick to approve our gifts and donations with the gratitude of the district. Questions? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you very much. Big meeting dates, Rich?
There are a few upcoming meetings, this is our only regular Board meeting in the month of December, so our next regularly scheduled Board meeting will be on Monday, January 8th, regular time at 6:30 here at the District Office, PDC. We have a Policy Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday, January 4th, so that's in our first week back from winter break, that's at 5:30 PM in the first floor conference room, again, that's Policy Committee on Thursday, January 4th at 5:30. We have a Finance Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, January 8th at 1:00 PM, and that also will be in the first floor conference room. also will be in the first floor conference room, that's Finance Committee, January 8th, 1:00 PM. We have our data workshop on Monday, January 15th at 6:30 PM, that will be here, and that's the data workshop, Monday, January 15th at 6:30. And then it's not a committee meeting, but we have a benefits advisory group meeting coming up this week on Wednesday, December 13th at 4:15 here in the PDC. And Rick, you take part in those, you represent the board on the benefits advisory group, correct?
Yes, I'll be there. Thank you.
All right, questions on any of the dates?
I think the one other thing that I didn't put in there is the upcoming state convention, but I think all board members have those dates on their calendars, we've talked about that at previous meetings, but with the winter break coming up, that'll be not too far away.
Here before you know it.
I'd like to thank Carly for being patient with those of us that don't reply as fast as we do.
All right, good on dates. All right, we have a executive session proposed here and we will not be returning to open, so thank you for joining us, those of you that have. I would consider a motion pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section, Wisconsin statutes 1985 sub 1 and sub C and D, which is considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, consider specific applications of probation, extended supervision or parole, or considering strategy for crime detection or prevention, for example, to discuss and take action if appropriate regarding the district safety plan. And our topics include district safety plan review and the superintendent evaluation. So move. Second. Thank you. Rick's motion is seconded by Dave. Go call a vote.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe is yes, Rick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Seven, oh, that motion passes. Get a drink of water and join us shortly.